This first and then went back and.
I think I used the transmittal sheet that you also had to write up. But here and there, that's the only two things that I had as.
Thirty-five, okay, then then somebody must have told me thirty-five is the number to go with.
Oh, in your, yeah, in that, yeah, go with that number?
You know, I think I would really ask Donna to get a good better.
I would say leave it as it is with a question mark.
Yeah.
Thirty thousand with a question, okay, good. All right, so should you want to make it down through these items and as to why you.
I'll explain all of these. The telephone system in town for the town hall and the library. I would defer to Donna and to Debbie about that because actually it's very expensive.
Here's the summary that I would, the question I would have, not are we going to spend it? But we spent four or five years ago to replace it. It didn't work. What are we going to do differently this time to get one that's not expensive? And that's the kind of question I will tend to have. We've got to do it, we've got to do it. But what will we do to make sure that we don't get a system again that's a problem? Is there anything?
I think that's something to talk over in putting together the specs. We pay for an internal system, as you know now. We paid Windstream or something nine hundred dollars a month for the internal system. And then it's a hundred and ten dollars for every change because we can't make the changes internally.
This is really expensive because I think we paid like about, I think it was like about thirty thousand. I'm gonna look it up, but four or five years ago, we paid about that much. Plus, we have nine hundred a month.
So, for example, my my extension when I was here always said Kelly Heber.
It still does.
It still does.
You can't change anything because every time you call vertical, it's a hundred and ten dollars, no matter what they do.
It's not.
My tellings.
So one of the things that Donna's doing right now is there's, I think, three phones right now that need to be updated. So she's saying, kind of as a scale, we do all three at once, it's a one-time charge.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I do think.
The main question again is, and the point is, are there any better companies out there? Did we just happen to catch, you know, a bad deal?
This this came from Donna and it would be helpful probably for you to talk to her or maybe ask Donna and Debbie to look on what kind of specs we should have because they manage the system.
So one thing with this phone system as I understand it is it's cloud-based. So there's there's a lot of benefit from from that element, modern technology, you talk about that. Whereas the hardline system sometimes, as I understand, has had some trouble. Voicemails being lost or.
It's not an easy system, it's.
Okay. The count's five. You get the point.
Yeah, we totally get the point.
My question is, what are we going to do differently so that, yeah, we have to have good communications. And they have to be reliable and hopefully they don't cost a lot.
One thing we did look at too for the meeting was there's five phones in the library, thirty phones in the town hall. Police and department bulwarks also have phones that are not included in this. But we wanted to do just a little further investigation. I just looked at the world of phones for the entire town because we talked about potential consolidation if you do a larger scale one. But the other departments seem to be pretty satisfied with their products right now. So I think that's why it wasn't part of this.
Can I just ask a question so I know the numbers that I'm working from? Which column, this is the source, it looks like free cash or raise and appropriate. So am I adding everything on this column for C or just the things you've highlighted in yellow?
Because I'm getting. You add everything in that first column.
I'm getting two drastically different numbers, I'm getting seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
No, no, you don't want, these are the total recommended requests right here. But they're broken out free cash here and free cash here. Now, had typically I would have had a total here, a total here, a total here, totals across here. I just don't have.
That's why, that's where I'm coming up at. The total here is three twelve, one fifty-eight, so if you add those two together, you get four seventy.
Right.
When I sum this column, I get seven hundred and fifty-eight. Also, I'm doing my math.
Oh, but but that's just the general fund, I didn't include.
Yeah, that's way off.
I know, but I didn't include parks and cemeteries and water departments simply because.
Got it.
I don't know where they're going to draw their revenues from, whether it's going to be sale of cemetery lots.
Okay, because this one goes from D seventeen to D sixty-one, so it's including everything. So something, project reserve is in here and building, okay.
It doesn't include these columns.
Got it, okay, I'll take out.
Because I know that the cemetery will not bring theirs.
Okay, so it goes to forty-eight.
And that's also a discussion to have for them about how they spend their perpetuation here and sale of.
So like a call is a discussion.
Okay, all right, so it's more four hundred and seventy-one is what you're saying is the requested amount?
Right, and from the general fund.
Okay.
Or the library trust, but the rest of it is. They have their funding sources and of course it would be important to know where those are. But they seem to operate out there on their own. The scanner, this is part of the request to meet the board's goal of accessibility, record accessibility online. We bought the, we have Laserfish, we now have the portal. But to really use that, somebody has to scan the documents. And right now, I think Debbie could explain the system of the.
I mean, you have to obviously work your way backwards. Everything I've done right now is scanned in as far as minutes. And that's something the board would be interested in, all the board minutes would be in Laserfish. But books would have to be taken apart, scanned in, and then put into the system, which is a process. And we'd like to get somebody to probably do that.
Well, this is for the scanner, the high-speed scanner. Right now, it has to be, you have to stand at the.
At the copier, which is.
The Conica, right.
The Conica.
And this would actually link directly, you have to stand at the Conica, load it all up, then go back to your computer and take that and put it on the website. This would automatically exhibit to the website.
The scanner would scan it right into Laserfish, would scan it right in.
What's the monthly volume on documents that's supposed to be used apart from the catch-up?
Oh, gosh, I mean, I'm just one department, so I'm not really sure.
Because I mean, I think that would be kind of interesting to see how many documents.
We are developing a plan on that, but it would be all the, from the clerk's office, it would be all the town meeting minutes.
It would be all the different boards, it would be the president against, deputy, like all that.
I'm saying if it's, you know, if it's a hundred, it's not worth it. If it's ten thousand, of course, it's worth it. Where are we in that so at least we kind of know?
We're looking at how to set it up. I believe we were talking about, the town clerk was looking at where some, how cities and towns have set these up. And some of them set them up by decades, everything from nineteen ninety, nineteen ten or something like that, eight, nine, nineteen, nineteen, whatever it is. And that's how they load them in. Interestingly enough, as we were researching this and people's communities that have these, this Laserfish on, they don't have a lot of material loaded because it is so labor-intensive.
Which is really the kind of question that I would ask at this point is, I understand the dollars for the machine. We get the machine, how are we going to make good use of it? Because it is labor-intensive and whatever else. So I think that's kind of what we'd like to see. I would like to see some kind of a plan that says we're going to dedicate an hour a day or an hour a week and we can do this many volumes and we can do, and this is what we plan to do, and these are the things. A little bit, as John said.
There's a team working on this.
We're going to be a hundred or we're going to do a hundred thousand.
Getting some sense of productivity. It takes an hour to do X number of documents the old way. It could be done in five minutes the new way. And there's X documents per month. You can come up with how many hours are being saved and do that over a year. Multiply that by the average loading cost for the employee involved. And now you've got to, not only do we do this and have it available, but we're going to save six thousand dollars per year and the lifespan is ten, so we'll pay for it unless the.
Well, we, Debbie and Beth and Donna are developing a plan. And I think the next step is really for, and I can talk to Kevin about this, to sit with them and say, okay, what is the plan and what is the format?
Yep.
And then what do we need to do to get there? But I think to get to where the the concept that you're looking at, we can't do it with the existing technology.
And I'm not saying, I'm saying if we went and did this, this would be what we.
Right.
Give us the productivity. The question is, we can take a rough stab at the productivity value to us.
Yeah, sure.
We know the cost per hour, you know, within a factor of fifty percent, still going to be helpful. And that will help justify it. If we're going to save a thousand dollars a year of labor, that's a tough one. If we're going to save, you know, six thousand dollars a year of labor, that's a pretty easy one.
Well, I I think your your question should be more like, what do you want and when do you want it?
If there's a timing issue, then that is a value that can be applied.
Right.
More qualitative than quantitative. But we need to have that full sort of case made for the purchase. I think, I'm going to guess that if it has a reasonable lifespan, that we'll find it invaluable as time goes on. But I think we should have that argument in hand when we try to make the case.
So this was put in because it it was a confluence with the board's goals of more, not because it's.
Transparency and online.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, it does make it easy, yeah, okay.
So that's why having those is important.
So we know, we know the cause of this, the board.
Yeah, when we were looking at this, when Kelly and I were putting the financials together to justify the lease of Laserfish with the grant that we got, and we talked to other towns, it took them about a year to do a department. So like you look at Bauxford and they did their town administrative department in one year because they had to do it like an hour a week because they were so busy. When it came to the land records, they outsourced it. They said they're not going to tackle that, that one outside of the building. So they did first the plan, as you're saying, what documents are most accessed or where do we get our efficiencies? Laid out that plan and then did the decision between whether you do it internally or you outsource it.
And that's what we're in the process of.
But they had the scanner.
We talked about doing COA, COA has some cash relief people. And we've talked to the director and see if there's anybody available to do it in-house that way to help out.
That could be a very good use of that, not a labor. How many people do we have who would be potentially available?
They have like maybe six or seven, but not everybody is.
Some can, some can't.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, well, I appreciate that there is a process going on to look at the process and to develop the business case as well as the practical case.
Okay, the town clerk, she's requested ballot tabulators and scanners. She has some concern that the the equipment we have is is not obsolete. But if we get to.
Ranked voting.
Ranked voting.
Yeah, but that's a legislature to do that, I read that. It's up to the legislature to do that, they may or may not do that.
Exactly.
So my thought on that, if that's the major reason for doing it.
It's basically a placeholder.
I would, I would, I would say at this point, if that's, because they haven't, and they haven't, they haven't done it. That sort of thing that you can reasonably say unexpected, I mean, how they vote. And then you go to reserve fund if you need it for a particular election. Typically, when they do it, they also give you a little bit of running room for that and sometimes even come up with some monies because we do a good job of telling them, if you pass it, you, you know, mandates, you better provide us with it. It's a one-time mandate that you give us enough to get the things, you don't have to do it every year, but don't pass it without, you know. So my feeling is, again, if it's primarily because of ranked voting, that that's probably shouldn't be on there.
I just put it in as a placeholder.
Okay.
Understanding that perspective.
The only other two is that based on census, my understanding, talking with Beth, is that it is possible there might be multiple precinct situation in tops in the future based on population. And I don't believe the current equipment can.
No, it also is, we need one for, in case you get another precinct.
Each precinct, right.
So again, out of the future placeholder type situation, but just something else.
Right.
And that will happen based on the census. So it's after the census, you know, the twenty-twenty census. So it'll be a year, it'll be twenty-twenty-one before anything like that happens.
We're looking at twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two now.
Yeah, twenty, it takes them, takes them a couple of years to get the census, do it, and then we do it.
So it's a placeholder for changes that might happen within the next year that could affect the elections in twenty-twenty.
It's for the twenty twenty-two congressional elections, that's when you, that's right, okay. So I I think it's placeholder for the future, so to speak, but I don't think.
It's not urgent.
Yeah, so that's potentially something that could come out.
But when it does happen, it will be urgent.
Oh, yeah, when it happens, it'll be urgent, I understand that totally. So I appreciate this, go through this further here.
Cruiser, that to me is an operating cost, I put it under a raise and appropriate. Police portable radios, again, an operating cost, I think both of those should be in the operating budget.
So could I just ask about those? I'm surprised that we think of them as you've got to keep replacing them because often it's a new technology that comes. We're going to be using a bandwidth and it's easier if we have a new radio to do it. We don't have to buy the chips, we can, this radio, you can now dial or whatever.
We usually know that in advance.
Please?
You often know that in advance.
So typically, it seems to me, you wind up doing a relatively big buy when you, so that everybody is able. You have this radio, I have that radio, they talk to each other, no, they don't, you know, you.
If you're switching over systems, you're right.
Are these associated with the cars?
No, these are, the sixty-two thousand includes, if I understand it, the transfer, they have to do new equipment racks and different things.
So the ten thousand is separate, these are.
I think the radios there are different, they're portable, which means it's on the cars. When you do a bandwidth changeover so everybody can talk to one another, then you do have a big capital cost. But once you're on the same bandwidth, in theory, you're just basically repairing and replacing the radios on an ongoing basis, so it becomes really a maintenance and operational item going forward.
Correct, and that's why I think it should be.
So we're all on the same bandwidth and this is a replacement?
Right, right.
Radios that wear out every year?
Yeah, he says, you know, I think there are some difficulties with the topography here. And right now.
That's the north side communications.
That comes later.
That's the, oh, oh.
The north side communication. But but they, right now, they have radios, unless they replace them regularly, they can't talk to each other. It's scratchy, they have a hard time here.
So the radios were up, they need to constantly be upgrading and it needs to be a plan.
It's like a pair of shoes.
It'll, it'll take a few years to get where each, you know, the old radios are only four or five years old and the new ones are coming in and it gets replaced on a regular basis. Opposed to this massive buy once every five years and everything degrades at the same time.
But this doesn't stop, right? This keeps going every year.
This keeps going. And the other advantage too in having that rolling case is there are times when you know you're going to a certain place. I don't know, San Antonio rail trail is a spot down by Winnetonka where things are tough communication-wise. Take your best radios, you know, make sure you've got one of the new radios. And so this, they can figure that stuff out. But I agree very much that we should make that an operational thing that's ongoing on a regular basis.
The next item is enhancement of the communication system. This gets at, again, at your topography and let's see what.
Yeah, yeah, he has to put some towers or some equipment on a tower, something like that.
Yeah.
Yep.
So that obviously is pretty self-explanatory.
I thought we fixed all of that, but I understand it's still a problem. We we put some money in a couple of years ago. Okay, got it.
Well, they want to, next year, they are asking for a repeater. But this is the first step in enhancing their communication. He's very clear that he wants this north side communication improvement. Police plumbing repairs, police site pedestrian pavement. I wish I had pictures of the pedestrian pavement, but that came from. I think what would be very helpful is in futures to go out and take pictures of these because this came, and after all the pictures were taken.
Yeah.
But actually, the facility dude has a whole bunch of pictures, including the steps going up. I think, I think we're in good shape with having some pictures.
I I just think pictures are very helpful when you put together a document like this. The boiler and the roof repair, I I think it's, for example, the roof repair for ten thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, that should have been something that you could pick up in an ongoing repair and maintenance program. Same with the pedestrian pavement and same with the plum, the plumbing repairs should, well, I can't say anything more than what you see in there. The chief asked for sixty thousand and Facility Dude said it's thirty-four, five. So I'm working from the Facility Dude numbers on that.
Where did the chief get his numbers?
I'm not certain. That's part of the problem with having, how they call up a plumber.
That's exactly what it is. They have a favorite plumber, every department has their own favorite plumber, the guy they know who's somewhere in town. I mean, a little over dramatic on this. They call up and they get good service and they come out and that's great. But we don't have a townwide contract, which is one thing we should have.
We should have, we should go out to bid for building and trades.
And that's, by the way, something we theoretically could regionalize what we call the towns on and give somebody a real chance to take care of us at a lower cost. But in this case, I think what it was, was a relatively informal process of asking the proper what were the costs. And it's what that guy would do, not necessarily what all of us bitter would do.
I do think in Ipswich, we went out for, and this would be something Donna could put together, that's something she and Kevin want to do, but is to go out for building and trades. You you say, oh, we're taking bids on electrical repairs.
Yeah.
And you submit, and of course, it has to be prevailing wages, but somewhere in there. And then you just call on that person all year. But right now, you have somebody doing this and somebody doing that.
So interestingly enough, I saw this, what I consider an odd number, thirty-four, five, twenty-seven. And I said, oh, they got a bid. And you're telling me Facility Dude ran the numbers and came out with an estimate? So that has to be changed to a round number of new.
I figured if I did that, somebody would say, oh, this must be the right number. Yeah, these, these numbers are not written stone, but, and then the the police site pedestrian pavement, which was not in the police chief's budget because it's outside of his building. So this is again the importance of Facility Dude. All right.
And the same thing with this odd twenty-three, eight, forty-one, that's just an estimate from Facility Dude? It's not somebody who came in and estimated?
No, it just came right out of Facility Dude.
So Robin, if Paul and Facility Dude are doing these estimates and then they go into the budget and like take Evan for instance, he's responsible for his budget. Is Paul then overseeing and managing submitting of bids and overseeing that work so that Evan is not held accountable to another by another person?
I think what has to happen with these is we need Paul to help put together the specs or work with Facility Dude, whatever documentation they have to put together the specs and for it to go out for, I wouldn't say bid, because some things don't require bids, but for Donna to put out the the specs and and get quotes or bids depending on.
Will that happen during the budget cycle so we have a better feel for the number? Kevin?
Yes, we'll wait that happen.
It needs to happen before town meeting, is what you're saying, correct?
Yes, but I was just asking.
Yes, yes, I agree with you.
What this should help you do too is is sort of rather than people putting in more than they need to cover any overages because they don't really now understand what they're doing, this should help you get more projects in the lineup. And this is your first year of using Facility Dude and it's, you're going to work your way through it. But having somebody that isn't the department director do look at these as well is really important. Okay, let's see.
Down to fire, aren't we?
Yeah, we're down to fire. Turnout here, that's an ongoing cost, ten thousand every year, that's why it says fifty thousand, it's a five-year plan. I I think it's, I think again, it's it's an operational cost.
Well, they'll always be replacing them and so on. We had a, up a great hill, somebody burned a hamburger and we had the fire department there. And I was looking at, because one of the firefighters had relatively new equipment, one of the other firefighters had equipment that was clearly worn. And needless to say, when they're going in, particularly if they're doing things like the fire that happened recently, stuff gets worn out, they'll always be replacing that. It degrades over time. That also should be on a rotating basis.
It should be in the operating budget.
And that's, that's the way to do that.
And I think that's a discussion to have with the finance committee because they're like, oh, look. Part of the sense I get from, of course, I haven't spoken with the finance committee, but from Catherine is they have a sense like, oh, if we let departments have this money, they'll go off and squander it.
Oh, yeah.
I just think that is a wrong-headed attitude.
As far as agreement, if we have agreement that the ten thousand should be spent on that particular item, even if it's in their operating budget, they're confined to spending it on that item, is that correct? Or do they have the flexibility to spend it however?
But but what you have in the budget is you can put in, in the operating budget and under munis, you can put in what's called a capital item. You have personnel, other expenses, and then capital. So she can put those under capital.
Even if it paid for out of an operating budget, you can treat them as equipment that's expected to last more than five years and cost more than X dollars.
It's still a management issue then?
Yeah, it is, but I mean, you have to have expectations of your managers.
There we go.
Tight tank installation, that's a capital item because it's a system and that.
Other complaints now?
Yep, a big risk to the town. And the air handler also came off of school dude and and that was, that's one of their top, it's number nine on the school dude list. And that has been listed as needing to be done. We built engine three pump, I think that's pretty self-explanatory, Dick Albert's test. And so it cannot have enough pressure.
So does that mean we're not using it for uses in a fire now?
Yeah, I, they're using it, it's their first, their vehicle that's on the first line of attack, but it just needs to be upgraded.
It might eventually affect our certification, but probably not.
Let me just understand, the fire engines are used for a lot of things. If there's a, an accident or something, we send the fire engine out because they have to have life support or else. If this pump is not safe, are they using this if there is a fire?
Yes.
It's not a safety issue.
It's producing water, but it doesn't meet, it doesn't meet the standards of enough flow for a big, big fire. And what happens is we have, you have a group that comes around every few years called ISO and it does fire safety ratings on the town. So it will check your pumper, how your pumpers are rated, and that affects your homeowner's insurance. They also check all the hydrants as well too and, you know, check down.
That has an economic effect directly for the residents as well as for the town.
But it just needs to be done and it's just.
How does it affect the homeowner's insurance if a town is rated?
If your fire department is not as capable as ISO standards indicate it should be, in theory, you would not have the same level of fire protection. If you don't have as much fire protection, your homeowner costs go up because from ISOs, the insurance company's point of view actually, the risk of greater damage is present and therefore the rates will go up, so.
So those ISO analyses are made public to all insurance companies?
Yes, public insurance companies depend upon them to set, among other things, to set the rates for a town. Just as the auto theft and, you know, things like that affect your auto.
How often does ISO come around to do a certification?
You know, I don't, I wish every seven, ten years, but I know that they were talking about, they were just out and conducting some fire flows of the, for the water department. Ray mentioned that, but Jen is very cognizant of those and she works with Ray on that. Fire flows and things like that.
Did this just recently fail or has she been watching this?
August, no.
Just for the record, Tauskill has a split rating.
What do you mean?
We have two numbers.
Oh, really?
Apparently, the reason is you have areas that do not have hydrants, so they're nines. And the other area, what, other things go on, but just be aware of that.
Aren't you just the man of all knowledge?
Not known on a scale of what?
He is.
Ten.
The ten being?
Bad.
The worst, we have nines?
But because.
There's no fire, there's no fire.
No, I understand what you just said, but I'm saying.
In the truck and that's it.
But of course, when you do your insurance, they ask, do you have fire hydrants in your, on your street? And you say no, and you get a different lot.
They calculate, when you give them address, the distance from the fire hydrant and that directly affects your.
Unfortunately, it's a distance, that's the way they do it.
So if you have a fire hydrant out front. So if you have a fire hydrant out front, you get a very good rate. If you have one that's five hundred feet down the street, then you get a lower rating. Even though you're on the same street and you do have public water.
We have one ten feet from the street.
Then you've got good luck. You must be one.
I don't think they, they don't do it by the foot. There's a point of distance which is you don't have.
They break it into, they break it into categories.
Speaking of fire systems, the highway and the water department both want to upgrade their fire system.
This is in the building?
Yes, from the wet to, from the dry to the wet. And they now have to pressure them. And since those wars from the end, you know, they both want it done. It's been pushed off. It probably should have been part of the whole building project.
Well, and it's the highway building itself. And we had a situation, it was a fire a few years ago where, I think it was a dump truck, wasn't it, Dick? That burned. It was in the yard. It burned in the yard. If that had happened inside the building, the cost to equipment and records and everything would have been great. So it's considered, now it probably affects town insurance rates too.
Anyway, I put that in, even though it wasn't listed on the, the Facility Dude item. I actually asked Paul to go back and check out where it was on Facility Dude. But when they, there's a transitional issue between, because the fire hydrant has been upgraded and can now supply a lot of pressure.
There's a backup pump up there too.
The next four of the schools, you'll see that the schools are doing a feasibility study relative to handicap accessibility on their grounds in the parking area. They have run into this in another community in the union and they feel that.
In the Bofford, Middleton, Tulsa?
Yeah. And that they now have to develop a plan for that. So in order to be proactive, they've asked for this money for this year with the anticipation that this will provide guidance to them in the future and get them cost estimates for what they would need to do to the two schools to make them fully handicapped and accessible.
Advantage of this too is that if they end up, for instance, having a handicap student for which the current configuration is not sufficient what way. If you have to make those, you may see other things and when you put the full picture, you know what you need to do. So it's things like the tactile plates at crosswalks, things like that.
Even the pavement?
The pavement, curve styles, sloping with condition. Masco's been dealing with that too.
Yeah, so that's their first, first year request. And again, replacing the clock systems, which are tied into their public announcement systems. And that's also a security issue, safety and security issue. Library trustees, security cameras, site drainage evaluation, I put those in the Gould Trust. They've had theft and vandalism, so they want to install security cameras. They're also concerned about behaviors in the library, sometimes that happens. But I think those should come from the Gould Trust, basically, it's like Gould Trust. The park and cemeteries want to replace, resurface the tennis courts. The schools use them on occasion, but that's the only tennis court you have. I don't know how much use it gets, but it's the, it's a high priority.
Spoke with Steve Shepherd. He recommended a twenty-five thousand dollar amount be put into the capital plan recently.
Okay.
On Tuesday.
I see Gavin's there as well.
So as you see, this is a very fluid document.
Yes, yes. But we need.
But as, as you go on, and you, you departments and you'll get your department heads and they, I think it will get more solidified and more concrete in terms of what you put together year to year. But this, I think, is a good first step to getting to that point. I told the departments that these forms that they fill out in here is their way to tell a story. And they should be telling their story. I think they didn't, some of them did not do a very good job. But this is a place for them to tell their story. And I hope in the future that they, they will tell their stories there.
What I really like about this too, I don't know if it was you or Robin, but there are some photographs in there. And having it kind of clearly laid out makes it a lot easier for us without having to drive and do the full tour of every little thing.
Oh, yeah. I think, I told them, the photos will tell, help tell your story. Then I've got the project reserve in there and a number four miscellaneous building repairs. As a starting, starting point, I really think you probably need more than that, but I don't.
Where is this? You're looking on the.
I didn't, I put it down here on the.
Gotcha, okay.
But I do think having some discussion with, you know, some of the departments to get some more clarity on these and the finance committee, which I'm talking about here in long term. Capital, your plan for addressing capital needs is probably really, I bring, I bring the schools into it too because they're elected officials too and they have skin in this game and they want to work with the town. So.
And they have big, and their numbers are usually big ones right now.
Yeah.
We're talking about replacing the windows and pop the school and such. I mean, these are big problems.
They should be in on this discussion. It shouldn't be the selectmen against the finance committee or anything like that. You need to bring in, you know, the school committee and the superintendent.
Yeah, they're three million out of the nine over the next five years.
Right. And so all this, you as a group, you're elected, the school committee's elected. You know, you're put in here by the public to say, take care of our town. And I think that's, that's the, that's your role in this case, to really advocate. Anyway, those are my thoughts on it. And I hope, I hope this serves as a good start to whatever comes next.
Can I just ask, I'm sorry, I blanked out looking at some of these other papers. For parks and cemetery, the hot top roads and replace pickup truck, the twenty thousand and the fifty thousand, that's not included in this? Is there another source?
It's another source.
Cemetery funds, okay.
And are we getting some of that done through some kind of compensation from the Church of Latter Day Saints?
Not, not the roads. They're creating a new road.
Okay.
Which I think is like, why are we putting a new road there? That's not my job.
Are we putting a new road in? No.
They are. They're putting it, they're putting in, I don't want to say.
They're redoing with sand dust, are they?
Yes, stone dust.
Stone dust path.
Yes, stone dust path.
Along, in an area for people to walk in the old cemetery.
To the. I don't know how wide it's.
It's gonna go past the Parson Capin. Yeah, Parson Capin and Priscilla Capin, you know, those. Because people do come in and look at all those historic things from time to time. And so they're putting in a stone dust path.
There's, there's all, that's separate. They're replacing these roads with hot top, which I like.
This is absolutely different, right? This is existing roads need to be resurfaced.
And the Latter Day Saints are paying for that work?
That's a separate.
The Smith Memorial family.
The Smith, the Smith family. And I think they're probably chipping in, I don't know, maybe with the stone dust, but certainly not with the roads.
Not the roads. The roads are completely stuck.
Absolutely, going up the other way.
For the water department, the upgrade fire system, what building is that?
That's the garage they share on the highway. They're putting in half or approximately half or a certain amount of it and the.
It's ninety-five thousand if you look at line thirty-eight.
Okay, so they're just splitting in some percentage. Okay. Okay, so that's four hundred and seventy-five thousand roughly.
Where'd you get that?
I just add in the two columns, the free cash and raise and appropriate, taking out maybe the nineteen thousand for the scanners, but.
Yeah, it's in the, it's close, yes, pushing, yeah.
Four hundred and fifty-five or so.
But you did spend, as I recall, about more than that, I think, on, the finance committee has an odd way of separating out raise and appropriate projects from the three hundred free cash projects. I'm not sure what their thinking is about that from last year.
It's probably a lot higher than the three hundred?
Oh, yeah. I thought I stuck something in here.
Israel works out. They've got a model that says, what do we have to do to create budgets for the year, for the coming year, that are within two and a half? And in order to do that, they say, we allow this to go up and this to go up and capital has this much allocated to it. And in a sense, we have to be within that so that they can do the two and a half. So that's why it's important, whether it's from free cash or otherwise, that they're thinking, they're already perhaps allowed, allocated some free cash for the, but the raise and assess is clearly going into the taxes. So we have to work within their guidelines to some extent. And I am concerned that the total comes out to something like four and a half, four hundred and fifty thousand. I think we're gonna have a problem with that. We're gonna have to trim this down.
Well, it'll be interesting to see what we actually did spend last year.
Yeah, I wonder, I thought I inserted in people's calendars, do you, do you have that? The one that Catherine gave me, the red stamp at the top that she was spent last year.
Five hundred six hundred?
Anyway.
I'm guessing, yeah.
It exceeded.
It's probably really close to this.
They have parts that goes to, parts to, that go, that went to tri-counts and this, that, and the other. But I did think this is not far off from what they approved last year. Because the other thing that you do here that is, it's hard for me to figure out how, why and how. You use your free cash to balance your budget. They say to lower your taxes. Because when they added everything up, you were actually over what you had raised and appropriated. So they take the free cash, they carry forward a portion of free cash, knowing it's going to lower your, your tax rate. So somewhere in the documents I left for the budget, it shows that sometimes you're, by doing that, you know, you close the gap between the levy limit and the budget.
You mean, you use a free cash to reduce the tax rate?
This year, you've got, you've got two hundred thousand in excess capacity this year that we're in. But that's, you only have that excess capacity because you appropriated five hundred thousand dollars to reduce the tax rate. So it's kind of odd, you know, I haven't encountered this, so it's hard for me to explain it, but.
So let me try that. The ward has in it the budgets, the ward, the individual ward articles, and wherever it says raise and assess, that in fact is what you have to come up with under two and a half unless you have an override for your recap. After all of that said and done, there is this last article, which is not, does not affect two and a half in any way, that says, we will apply this free cash to reduce the tax rate for the coming year. But the raise and assess is the thing that drives the recap, which is, which is controlled by two and a half. So that last thing that we do does not affect two and a half.
Yeah, it, it.
Are you saying we're still leaving two hundred thousand before we hit our ceiling and we're offsetting that?
If we assess less, does that lower what we can assess in future years?
Well, some people have done underwrites, but what I'm saying is you use about five hundred thousand dollars a year to balance your budget.
So if we actually raise that, would that raise how much we could raise in the future? Or by taking that half million off and raising less, because we apply it to lowering the tax rate, we actually continue to hold back what our potential limit could be?
When you get to the budget, it's something to talk with Catherine about because she tracks these year to year. Because I was saying, well, how much are you leaving on the table? Well, last year, a couple, I'd say not the year we're in, but last year, maybe the year before, you only, you know, you want to have about fifty thousand sort of there, you know, because you don't collect all your tax bills and whatever. And you also get more money year to year generally than you anticipate, like motor vehicle excise or something like that. But you actually appropriate, your expenditures exceed what you're allowed under prop two and a half. And free cash is used to essentially reduce the tax rate so that you come in at or below.
No, no. That has.
You guys are talking different things. I don't know which is true, that's why I'm trying.
Well, it's something to talk to Catherine.
We need to resolve it, but I'm confident, I'm confident it's not about two and a half. Okay, but we need, the point is, we need to resolve it.
I agree very much. And so we understand.
And you also carry forward.
Cause I could be wrong, of course.
No, and we just don't know.
We need to, we need to.
Kevin's gonna actually.
I also see that, you know, you carry forward free cash and connects here, which is fine because you also have, there are some accounts that come in higher and lower. But it might be helpful to have that discussion with Catherine.
We need to have it.
You're as knowledgeable as the finance committee about some of this. I think that would be a good exercise for the board.
Kevin, I think that's a really good idea. We're gonna be talking budget at our next working session. And I'm thinking it might be helpful to have Catherine join us for that.
Okay.
That make sense, Dick?
Yes.
You know, what's the outlook and get a good sense. I know you guys get it in the finance committee meetings. But there's, there's, just, look at your funds, look at all the special revenues, get a sense of where you are on that and.
Can I offer this thought because I've, I've done it a number of times? Towns, unlike cities, need to have a annual town meeting in which they establish the budgets. And those budgets are established roughly a year, a year before they're spent, right? They're doing it in May and you're gonna be spending it after that. Some things as much as eighteen months out, June, May, June of the, oh, maybe not eighteen months. Well, yeah, you're making your decisions back in, in March, so by the time you get to the, whatever. So, but within a city, you have a council and the city can, is, is the legislature and they can move budget things around and make decisions within, it still has to be within prop two and a half, but they can move things around in various budgets and do things. If you're a town, if you're a town, you need a town meeting to do that. The only appropriation is done by the town meeting. Can be a special town meeting, but only a town meeting can do that. So there's two kinds of towns. There's representative towns and there's open meeting towns. We're open meeting. Representative towns, easier to have a special town meeting because you're gonna ask two hundred people to come forward and maybe they don't all make it. But they, they're the legislature and they can make the decision to move the budgets around. And so you can, open town meeting, you still, it has to be a special town meeting. So what do you have? A special town meeting on September first, November first, February first to move things around? No, you don't do that. As a matter of fact, we've been very good about doing it at the ATM. We haven't had special town meetings to move things around. What it means is we need to allocate more, in my mind, in each individual bucket so that there's enough that those buckets can do their job than you would normally have if you could move things around. The result of which is, at the end of the year, you hopefully have excess in those various buckets. Because you had to put more in there because they don't have the flexibility within the year. They have to. Now, you do have that one thing that happens, the special town meeting, during annual town meeting time, you can move things around at that point. So if in fact, you, you can work your budgets out, yes, you can move something from this account to, from fire to police, to police to fire in, on May tenth, when you have, whatever you have your special town meeting, you can do that. But other than that, you, you can't do it. So that's why in a open town meeting, in my mind, you, you need to be more conservative and provide enough money and all those things. But then manage it well to say, why did. why did you really have to spend that money? Is that really necessary?
Are you saying, Dick, to provide more money in each of the buckets or to change the categories to make them broader so that you can move monies within the categories?
Well, you could make them broader, but then...
Because are we having a problem where people are coming up short, that we need to provide more?
No, no, it works. It works. The system works.
What we're doing is working.
Yes, it's working.
Okay, so what were you proposing?
Well, I'm not proposing anything. You just have to explain, though, that our working, budgets need to have a little bit more flexibility when they're, when they're set up. That you do have to have in a city environment where they can move things around on, every two weeks. They have a meeting, council says, we need to transfer from this to this, mayor asks for it, okay, you can do it.
We do it once a year, essentially.
We do it, right.
And other places...
I understand. I didn't know if you were explaining to the public how we operate with budgets and town meeting.
No, but I say other, some towns just, as a matter of course, have two town meetings so that they can essentially, maybe in certain areas, work on a six-month window instead of having to go on a twelve-month. Dick's absolutely right. When we have a twelve-month, it's a little harder to guess. You've got to sort of get it right because you're basically saying, we don't want to come back and do a special town meeting. So you have to leave a little more flexibility, but you've got to really monitor and watch. So it's a different process.
Which is what we're doing.
Yeah, that's what we're doing and it's working.
So I would like very much to close this.
Not yet, not yet.
But I want to do the last thing, exactly. So I was going to say, I want to close this part of the discussion. The other thing I just want to acknowledge, for me, this has been an exceptionally valuable exercise. And I hope going forward, we will always do this sort of look at the capital closely and then when we get to the budget, we're going to be able to have a little bit more context.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, which I think is great.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Robyn, yes, yes.
No, this is very helpful. I'm glad you came here.
I'm not saying it's perfect, but I think it's a good platform to build from.
But you helped explain your reasoning behind it. We may or may not decide to adopt that reason.
Oh, yeah, no, I totally understand.
But knowing sort of how it got in there and why is invaluable for us in making our assessments going forwards.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing written in stone there, but I think it's good for you to have it well in advance.
Yep.
And I think you might not have had it as early in the past, I'm not sure.
Well, I like this getting it earlier before we get into the minutia of the budget itself.
Yeah, I usually start capital plans like in the fall.
We really should be doing this in October, November, what we're doing now.
I agree.
But Robert came on and did a great job of getting us up to speed from...
And I think moving it forward, Kevin, would be a target because I think, it's a good point. We'd like to kind of have a lot of this stuff clearer as we get into the budget so we can put the proper amount of time in the budget. Things happen fast.
Next year it should be easier because you'll have school dude and now departments have gone through this exercise, so it'll be a lot easier.
And we're way ahead of where we were last year. Last year we were doing this at least a month later.
I agree.
Thank you, Robyn.
All right, well, it was good to see you all again.
Take care.
Thank you.
I'm also a phone call away.
Yep.
So I make a motion to approve the board's selected minutes of November eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen as present.
Second.
I just needed to see what's in here last year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes the hand in the slate.
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, this meeting is hereby adjourned. And thank you.